I'll call this meeting to order. This is the Nottingham Planning Board Wednesday, September 8, 2021. Go around the room here and have people introduce themselves. I'll start with Buzz.
Robert Davies, alternate.
Gary Anderson.
Tom Warren.
Dirk Grotenheis.
Ian McKinnon.
Shelley Anderson.
Jen Anderson.
Stafford Regional Planning.
Scott Miller.
Tonight, we'll, we have two board members not able to join us, Susan Mooney and Ed Veal, so I'll seat Robert Davies for Ed Veal. And I requested a small change in the agenda just to have a discussion with the board on some of the 2021 Warren Article 19. We had a meeting with, with town council and, and we think everybody, pretty much everybody was in attendance for that, but we want to just talk internally about future applications that may come in, what sort of things came out of that meeting that we should be looking for, just to kind of get a synopsis of how we're going to move forward with some of the information that we received. None of this is necessarily binding to, if we were going to change something, we still have to go to the Board of Selectmen. If we have to change some zoning, we have to go through that process as well. But the guidelines that we were provided, SRPC was able to provide a little bit of a summary for it. It was sent around. And I'm just going to touch on that, like to talk to everybody about what we're going to move forward with. So for those that are knowing, Article 19 is the Warren article that was passed regarding roads, was to, a vote to accept a number of roads in town, and the town had been maintaining these roads, and the roads that are indicated were accepted by the town, by the passage of that article. The towns were, the town accepted these in the condition as is, as they were passed in the warrant article. And the, the roads can be improved on by the town as needed, if necessary. But as it replies, applies to the Town Planning Board, there are a few things here. The, some of the roads are platted and have actual plats, right-of-ways or easements that run through those. And the town now has the right-of-way, the rights to those, those lands, but also the rights to the lands that it's traveled on. And there are some areas that don't have platted areas, some roads don't, aren't platted, or have specific language that, in the deed. So there's some additional work that is necessary by the town and by future applicants to prove ownership, but also prove that right-of-way, so the planning board can administer the zoning regulations as it See. So it will definitely need to be kind of a collection of different information. And as we talked that night, you know, a lot of this information would need to come from the applicants when they do apply. So those proofs or those deeds, whether it's a surveyor, the actual recorded deed language, will all need to be distilled down to prove that ownership. And then it may need to be pieced together. The land underneath these easements is still the property of those same owners, so they'll, they own that. The town has the right-of-way through that, and improvements and maintenance as necessary. The road that, some lots actually get bisected by this right-of-way, or the property gets bisected by the right-of-way. And in that case, again, the property underlying is owned by a private entity, by that owner, but the town still has those, those rights to, to pass over that and to maintain it. The setbacks, I think we had talked a little bit, asked some questions about setbacks, and our understanding is the setbacks will still be made from the road. The road is the road. And so those will have to be maintained. And any new applications that would come in would still need to meet by those setbacks. Any other, those are just very general, but I wanted to make sure that we're on the same page as we go through this. And we do have the authority and the ability to talk with applicants about if, if something's not fitting together, of how best to fit that together to make, you know, it necessary property, necessary easement, and something that works for the roadway. Any other points that I wanted to bring up?
Yeah, I think the only thing for us, with some of us, we're getting caught up on the setback, and that's partially because of the language of the zoning ordinance, just the way that it reads currently. But I think we've all agreed that there might need to be some revisions to the language of the zoning ordinance, but we did get confirmation that those setbacks, even though the language the ordinance says from property lines, that it's confirmed that it should be taken from whether that's a property line on a roadway, easement boundary defined as, the easement being defined as a road, that still counts and the setback must be taken from that. So we got that confirmation. And then I think there's just going to be stuff that needs to be worked out as applications come forward. Not everything is the same, so every application will be a little different.
I think the one, one thing to, we, we need to definitely consider that these are town roads, and maybe use that term town roads versus easements, right-of-ways, you know, that just confuses.
Right. They may exist as easements in terms of the language of the deed, but yeah, they, on a plan, it might reference a book and page for an act, an easement, but that is essentially the town road.
Right.
I think the other thing too was, that was brought up, is that in some cases, the road may be platted one way, and it may be traveled a different way than what's platted. And we need to take both of those things into consideration in looking at what is the road and where is the road. And so it's, it might be some cases in which it's two different, you know, directions of where the, where the road actually is. And we'll need to take that into consideration and address those issues.
Yep. Yeah. And as with all applications, these aren't specific to any one. Until we see those applications, we'll have to use that judgment on, on these. The other part that we discussed was improvements based on, you know, future applications coming in. And if the roadway needs improvements, there would be potentially some proportionate sharing of improvements necessary, proportionate to the development, or the subdivision, or any new application that would come in for, for permit.
Will this document, is this something that we're, will be posted just for reference? So what if applicants consider this for all for internal?
No, the, the stuff has just been internal information. Again, it needs to get either solidified by the zoning change, which would then have specific needs to go into it, or if there's, you know, a policy change or something, then that has to go to the Board of Selectmen. But we already have the authority to do basically everything that we talked about tonight.
Yeah.
The planning board has that authority. We just were able to get clarification on those.
And I think the other point that the attorney made up is even though, you know, this warrant article kind of, you know, kind of brought up this discussion, is that we really need to look at this for kind of all the, all the roads, you know, or not just these.
Yeah, this applies to every single town road. Yeah.
Yeah. When, because we've had applications in the past where, you know, whether it's on a substandard road, or a dirt road that's attached to a paved road, and who pays for paving? And so we need to be more consistent on our proportioning of, of impacts and mitigation outside of just the property that is being developed. We need to be aware of those a little bit more than we have been. Any other members want to bring up anything in general?
Summed it up pretty well.
Okay, good. All right. So that brings us to public hearings. And tonight, we have case number 21012-SUB. It's an application from Nathan Tandy requesting two-lot, conventional subdivision of a backlot, property located at 22 Guile Road in Nottingham, identified as tax map 28, Lot 10. Guile Road's a scenic road. And applicant, agent is here.
Try printing some of this eight and a half by 11. It didn't look too pretty.
So if you could state your name and the, the information that you just passed out here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Peter Landry, Landry Surveying. What I just passed out was updated plan copies that were turned in a couple of weeks ago to the planner. And of course, bringing, no secretary bringing hard copies tonight for you at 11 by 17. So you've seen the first sheet, the clean sheet and the topo sheet. The comments from the planner have been addressed and, and added to that sheet. The third sheet you see is a result of the last meeting we had, which, maybe a month ago, which we had talked about the centerline grade and whether it was 8%, 9%. I went through the, and Ian suggested that we do a profile, so we've done that. And a little, you know, raising, stretching of the curves, we're able to, to meet the requirements for the centerline grade of 8%. So, and that's what that planner profile is depicting on the third sheet. That's, that's new to the package. The other bit of new information, last Monday, we revisited the Conservation Commission because of the realignment of the driveway and being on a scenic road for their input. And I'm not sure if they had given you a letter or not, but.
Yep. Yeah, we received a letter earlier today. And, and the commission, I'll just quote this, "The commission was satisfied with care and attention given to the new design minimizing the negative impacts and environmental, and to the scenic features of the site. So we appreciate that you met with them and made some adjustments to that."
Okay. Thank you. So, and, so in addition to the, the comments that were on Stafford Regional Planning's punch list, I had a couple of other things that I just wanted, I probably had noted, but we've been to a couple of meetings, so I just wanted to, again, just go over. Of course, the land surveyor and the certified wetland scientist stamps will be placed on the final mylar and final prints. There'll be a final plans in electronic PDF format provided. We still need to get DES state subdivision approval for the Lot 10, which is the under five-acre lot with the existing house. We haven't submitted for that yet. And we need to set the final monuments, the granite bounds, and then, of course, supply the written monumentation certificate. So those are just a few of the loose ends. So. That's where we're at. And of course, any questions, we can try to get them answered.
And I'd ask Jen, this is a fairly recent review done today or yesterday. Anything outstanding from that review that has not been addressed that you're aware of?
I've noted for everything and concur that everything has been submitted that we had identified.
Was there a note on there that neither lot? I can't remember. Is it just 10A restricted from further subdivision?
No, the both.
Just, I thought it was both. What was the first note? I printed this off and then forgot to grab off the printer. On your, on your review, I thought it was the first comment that you had said both lots.
Um, no, it's just the back lot that was restricted. Ooh, neither is restricted.
Yeah, that was, where did I see that?
Um, I apologize, this is one of the ones that Jane stated.
So this, okay, so here, the little lock here must contain.
Here, neither can be further subdivided. So, um, 4T, 3B refers to the front lot that's the 200, uh, 200 feet of frontage, or minimum, that one may not be further subdivided. And then, sub-therapist C is the back lot, and it also says that that one may not be further subdivided.
I, I guess I didn't catch any of what you're talking about. Are you talking about the restriction? Isn't that just for the back lot?
No, it's actually, so under Article 4.
Well, how are you going to subdivide a three-acre lot?
I know, it's just, but that's.
I never, I've never put that on the, on the, it's always been on the back lot, the way it was, I've never had that restriction on the, on any one I've ever done in this town for over 20 years. So that would be news to me tonight, if you're now saying we have to restrict the house lot.
Yeah, so it's saying basically the parent lot that has the 200 feet of frontage may not be further subdivided as well. So it'll just require modification of that note, number one, on your first sheet. Therefore, Lot 10A, it should refer to both lots.
All right. Well, if that's the way it is, seems.
So we're saying he has to state that Lot 10, the original flat's three acres, can't be subdivided.
In the future. Essentially, by doing this backlot subdivision, you're locking in.
So in case we change our zoning ordinance to less than two acres?
Well, or.
Because right now, technically, you can't, you doesn't have enough land to subdivide.
Correct. Or if you go for a variance. So it's basically, but it's basically saying if you're going to take advantage of the back lot, you, that parent parcel, the 200 feet minimum, cannot be further subdivided.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we'll have to amend the note, apparently.
That's the only thing I think I caught on what I was hearing.
Okay. So we've got all that worked out, so we've got some conditions that are still outstanding, which is basically the state subdivision, setting monuments, mending note number one to include the restriction of further subdivision for Lot 10.
And the wetland scientist stamp that would just be added.
Yeah, and the wetland scientist stamp. Yep. Anybody want to make a motion to what I just said?
I'll make a motion to approve case number 21-012-SUB, with the conditions previously stated by the chair.
Second. Any other discussion on that? Those in favor indicate aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Want to go better electronically, right?
One big PDF.
Yeah, just one big PDF. All right. So then the second case is 21-010-LLA, an application from Mark and Patricia Lawson and 70-25 LLC for a lot line adjustment. Property's located at Lamprey Drive in Nottingham, identified as tax map 70, lots 23 and 25. The applicant is here, and the applicant agent is here. And as you heard, we did have a meeting with our attorney, so we have some guidance on what we'd probably like to be moving forward with on the roadway easement, and whether we call it a town road or, or not. So the town, we're seeing this as, you know, a town roadway, and I think you, you show it as an easement that's there, correct? And.
Which, when we're talking about the platted Lamprey Drive, or the, probably both, I guess. But it sounds like you're talking about the platted right now. Not where it leads in, we're through the parent track from Dolph Damm.
We're talking about only the, the platted piece within the lot.
Got it.
Of ownerships.
Basically been instructed that we have to look at it per application. We're not going to look back at Lamprey farther down the road. What is Lamprey in relative to this project?
Okay, that seems fair enough.
Yeah. And so there is currently, and I don't see the width here, but it might be about 35 feet in total width. Do you know the actual width of what's called Lamprey Drive accessway easement?
It's funny that's not on there. I think it's 33, isn't it? Hold on a sec, let's start guessing. It's right here.
See the diagonal at 33?
33.
33?
We'll put that on the plan. But you, again, you've also got the actual physical road, which I think you mentioned, and this case might apply because it's outside the plat.
Correct. Yeah. So the traveled way, and this is one of those cases where the traveled way is outside the roadway easement area, or the, I guess we're going to be mixing all these up.
But before we get on to all of this, maybe you're going to circle back around. The way this, and I suspect I, my crystal ball would tell me what you're going to say, but the way we had left this was, the first question was, did this part of this platted Lamprey Drive get incorporated in the Article 19?
Yes, yes.
So it did. So if that's, if that's, if that's it, and that's what you've said before, of course, then I introduced information regarding the, the lapse in time. When this, this Lamprey Drive was approved in 1965, the law back then gave the town 20 years to accept the road. So the dedication ran out in 1985. I brought that up at, well, probably the last meeting. And I guess that has no bearing at this point on the decision, is what I'm hearing.
Correct.
Okay, that's fine. That's, that's, I knew that would happen. But that's on the record. So if Lamprey Drive is a town public way, which we're stating it is, then, I know the planner disagrees with this, but I got to be honest with you, I don't understand how we could continue with a lot on adjustment. Because now we have a public way that divides the two pieces we were trying to lump together with a private drive. Now, now we've got a public way. Now we've got 50-foot setbacks. We've got to have a two-acre lot and 200 feet of frontage. So this whole application could be, you know, summed up tonight. If you either say, Pete, we can't accept this six, you know, little over half an acre transfer of land because it doesn't meet zoning. You need to go get a variance first before we could do, if you want to continue with this lot line adjustment. If you tell us that, then we'll make a decision. If you tell us, oh, no, that's fine. We can, we could approve this as a lot line adjustment. Then I'd have a, we're going to have a problem with that because I know the state DES would never approve that lot as a, as a lot. It doesn't meet the requirements for a minimum lot size.
And that's where we're at.
Okay.
So there are, what, what, we were led to believe that there are some other options, as in a septic, what was it called?
You can get a waiver for.
Waiver from DES. It's a DES waiver for the additional land or the septic waiver, right?
Yes, for subdivision. I'm unaware of that.
For D, it's, for DES, you can, it's not used very often, but there's, essentially you'd be essentially acquiring an easement over that back property to satisfy your loading requirements, but.
It wouldn't be buildable.
I've never dealt with one.
Only, only be used for septic loading. That's what we were told.
Right.
I don't know if you've.
Told by the DES?
It would be by DES.
So you were told by DES?
No, this was by attorney who's done this through DES.
I've never done one, so I wouldn't know for sure.
It didn't sound like it was very often.
He's saying DES is very flexible in allowing extensions, I'll call it, for loading purposes.
No, given, he hasn't seen any of the plans. So this is just, he was throwing out options specific to this. So it wasn't his, his advice to us really to this specific case. They did not discuss this specific case in detail to him.
I do kind of, before we, I want to go back. I thought the determination was such that that land, I might use the term easement again, but because the land, Lamprey Drive is the platted way, in theory, it's an easement. It's not, there's no granting of lands. You're not granting that corridor via deed to the town, it's establishment of a, of an easement over the property.
Article 19 establishes easement, right?
Right. It's the, it's over the property you're intending to acquire, that additional property.
It would have been, because somebody, you know, again, somebody has to own it.
Right. So I thought the determination, though, just to go back to Mr. Landry's question, was that it could proceed as a lot line adjustment. It's just, there would be some setbacks applied.
Yep.
Stuff like that. So I just want to clear that up. I thought that, do we, I thought we agreed that, or kind of everybody felt that it could continue as a lot line adjustment. It's just, there might need to be some tweaks to the plan.
That's, yeah, there was two, there was kind of two directions with this. One would have been that DES subject.
Yeah.
And, and the other would be if, but it's not buildable. I mean, there's all the setbacks and all of that. It'd just be land added to the parcel. But it's, you can't.
But I believe that's all.
If you gave them sewage loading, it would have some value, I guess.
Yes.
Right. So essentially, for the purposes, if, if we look at this plan here, you know, you'd have ownership under, on, over all this land. There would be a defined easement town road corridor through here, which is what you're showing here. And that essentially there would be setbacks that applied, but I believe this would fall under the preconform, or non-conforming setbacks.
I apologize for our, right now, because, you know, I sat the same meeting. I was with you guys. And what I took, because again, our lawyer is not very point, you know, black and white when it comes to things.
when it comes to things, he's, and again, I don't like that, but that's another story on something else. If he wanted something across the street, this is a subdivision. It has to be a two-acre lot.
If the attorney said he couldn't build anything on it?
Yeah.
He said pending setbacks, if you apply setbacks.
This is where he was a little vague on this whole subject.
But it's not, it's not, it's not its own lot, it's being added to the lot that already is the Lawson lot.
So, yes, that's what I took, so you could, my interpretation, I'm just making it even more, was that he said there was nothing that precluded doing a lot line adjustment to incorporate land from the other side of the road, that you could have land on both sides of the road legally as a single lot and as a single...
I think he was referring to if the road was, that lot was already pre-existing. If the lot was on both sides of the road and you had the easement to it, those two are still okay the same. But not that you can add more land to your front lot by buying a small section on the other side. That's how I took it.
What I thought was that, why would you let someone do that?
Which is his way of saying no.
Because, exactly, it wasn't an explicit no, it said that they're...
Because he won't say it.
...preclude you from doing it, but as a policy, why would you do that? Because you don't go outside of your house and cross the street to play in the front yard. And that, yeah, it's a, it's a lot of...
And this is another, you know, it wasn't this specific case, but in this specific case, they cannot, they're not increasing the footprint of their building, they're not building a bigger building, they, you know, they're prohibited in doing that because they, there isn't enough space. That's not the reason why they're purchasing or would like to have this land transfer, it's for an additional septic area, if, in the future.
Or for septic loading.
Is there a house there now?
No, it's a vacant lot.
A vacant lot.
Well, if there isn't, it's actually a large lot that he's cutting a piece off.
But on the other side of the road.
On the other side of the road.
Right.
The small, no, the lakeside lot. It's a smaller lot that doesn't eat.
He only lots, he only owns lot 23.
Which is the 0.44 acres.
And there's no house.
Yes.
Trying to build a house to put, he wants a bigger septic system so we can get a three-bedroom septic instead of two-bedroom septic.
And maybe some extra parking at the time when it was a private, maybe a garage.
Exactly.
You know, the stuff people want around the lake that they don't have.
Right, but the issue is that you still have to draw your, your fixer building.
Well, once the, once Article 19 got adopted on June 8th, that changed everything.
It did, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Changed everything.
And we put this in, of course, before, well, that's been, again...
The prior, the prior folks, correct me if I'm wrong, because I know Steph was the one advising at that time, but the prior applicants, you know, she had advised that even if they acquired a land from Mr. Bassett's parcel on the other side of the easement area, you still did not have the contiguous area. And think about the case that we just had where you moved the driveway because the ease, the driveway easement bisected the contiguous building area, and there wasn't enough building area to meet that contiguous provision, and so the driveway was moved. That was the same, that would have been the same case.
That's a subdivision, this is a lot line adjustment, this is a, this is, we're starting with two lots, we're ending with two lots. The subdivision was starting with one lot and ending with two, different set of rules. That's the difference here. But with this town road going, public town road going through here, you're going to want, if you approve this lot line adjustment, you're approving a substandard lot of record.
Correct.
Without a variance.
Right, correct.
That's a big no.
Yeah, we can't do that.
The only way you can do it is buy two acres and make it a whole separate lot.
Or get a variance.
Or try to get a variance.
Try to get a variance and create our own hardship.
Yeah, that's, I've been sitting here long enough, I've done this, and I know John, that's the only way we're going to...
I understand.
Yeah, I misunderstood that there was a building already there.
There is no building there.
I understand that now.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That was my misunderstanding before, I'll make that clear.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I apologize.
So, yeah, that's, I guess then, we can't proceed with a lot line adjustment.
All you have to say. Unless you think you can, but I guess we've just hashed that out, because the first, five minutes ago we could, but now we can't, so...
The attorney, yeah, that's the issue, the attorney said you could, but then as John stated, you kind of went back and said, well, why would you?
We can't just nail it down into one simple, you know, comment like that, you know? There's, there's a lot, this is a specific incidence here versus the information that we were seeing.
Let's go backwards, though, because there were the other Lamprey Drive properties where the lot line adjustment was conducted, and it went from substandard to substandard. And the attorney had said that you can go from, for lot area, you can go from substandard to substandard because you're just shifting the lines, it's still substandard. When you're doing a lot line adjustment, you do not need to bring something into conformance. It's when you go to pull the building permit, and that was what the applicants were advised, that that's fine, if you want to shift your lot lines, you can shift your lot lines, but it does not give you or guarantee you anything. You are still a nonconforming lot.
And he's still going to have to meet everywhere on lot 23, as lot 23 consists today, 25-foot setbacks.
He chose to build on it.
Which he's going to obviously go build on it.
And that's what the other applicants were advised, and they, they chose to still go forward, I believe.
Right.
But they were advised, if they approved the build, they would have to go forward and get those variances from those, for those nonconformities, that they could not build just because they had gone forward and done the lot line adjustment. So I think the, kind of being consistent, you can do a lot line adjustment and go from nonconforming to nonconforming, but it does not give you anything.
The only difference, if you're referring to the previous Kevin Bassett lot line adjustment, those were private roads at the time.
Right.
It's, yeah, it's, you're right.
So this, that's really a huge difference, I think, my mind, my opinion.
I think it's, I think it's in our best interest to have the attorney review what you make of this.
What?
To get the attorney's advice.
Because this is, yeah, I'm stuck with this.
For this specific case.
Where can you turn around with this? And I think...
Well, that is town, no, that's all town road, he said. That's going to get challenged.
I think it's, it's in our best interest and it's in the applicant's best interest.
Well, and we kind of got that advice.
But he...
He hasn't seen anything specific.
Hasn't seen anything specific, and he did state that several times, and, you know...
No, I'm saying the advice to look deeper. Have him look deeper.
This still wouldn't add up to two acres.
No.
And that's why I'm getting, that's where I was going with it, is I'm at the point of, Jen, is essentially, it's still a nonconforming lot, but it's essentially...
But it's less nonconforming.
Or it's more, more, yes. And that's where you still have to apply your 20-foot setbacks.
It's going in the right direction.
Yeah.
Absolutely. But again, we never really, I mean, and the answer is this, we've never had to cross a road. All right? If somebody on Guile Road says I want to buy 100 feet or cross on the other side of the road, or a town road, we're going to say, no, you can't, because you have to have a two-acre lot there. You can't buy 150 feet or 500 feet and have it, or, I mean, just, well, I mean, it's not a buildable lot, it's not going to be, it'd just be, what's the purpose of it?
It's the town road.
No, those roads are different than these roads in that those are, those are owned by the town.
Okay.
Whereas this land underlying is not owned by the town.
I'm not so sure about that, but...
Well...
Right.
The town easements.
We basically own it now, I think.
Yeah. The town has to take care of it, the town has to allow it, the town has to do stuff, so it's...
Same theory.
Yeah.
So I don't think this, I mean, we can, if the board feels good about cornice, they'll contact the lawyer, I mean, I don't care, fine. But I particularly think after the conversation we had the other day, and my interpretation of it, that it's, it's not going to be a go, but that's...
I tend to agree, and I guess I'll turn it back to the applicant. I mean, we are, we will, if you would like, we will provide this to the attorney for specific...
But we were doing that.
Yeah. No, we weren't, we weren't. We were not your specific application, we were getting information from the attorney that we could use to review all of our applications that are coming in.
And again, the only, we bring this in front of the attorney, but I really think that it's going to be a no.
That's the only interpretation I got.
Continue on it.
Do you want them to ask their attorney specifically?
To hand them all this information?
That's what you're offering right now, or?
Yeah, right. For the town's dollar. Kevin was unable to attend, I don't know where he's... Amazing.
It would seem logical if there's a chance that you can add that waiver he's talking about, I never heard of it, but if you can get what you're loading and approve it, why don't we ask the attorney? Only a couple more weeks. If you find out midterm that it's a no, you could just let us know, we won't have to take up any more of the board's time.
Yep.
Can we do that?
Yes.
It may take more than two weeks, I understand, but if...
It may not, he's pretty good.
Okay, since he's hot on the topic.
Hopefully this is fresh on his mind.
This is also specific, when, before prepping for his meeting, he was looking at the big picture at, again...
At all the roads, at all the issues.
He stressed that what he was speaking to was not just for these newly 19 accepted roads, it was every town road and...
Let's give him another bite at it. So to be clear, what we're going to ask the attorney?
Yeah.
Just so we're not wasting any time, I, Peter, I'm doing this for you right now, so please.
Can we proceed with this lot line adjustment as is?
As is. Now, there'll be, the applicant is asking not to build anything on this parcel. Well, we're not going to restrict that, what does that got to do with anything?
Can't restrict them on a build on that lot.
Say, we're not going to put, you already, we're not going to put a note...
But there's, but there's still, so...
If we want to put a shed or something on it.
That's it, we can't restrict the parcel A in the back, but we would apply front setbacks and the, he can't build within that town road platted way.
Right.
And he has front setbacks, which essentially is as if anybody came to us and proposed, whether it was a 50-foot right of way, the same idea, he still has restrictions on setbacks and building, and I, you know, I think there's a determination that like, you can't use the land underneath it for any contiguous building area.
Right.
To satisfy the town's needs. Obviously, the state has certain other requirements for lot loading and such, but that's why...
So whether we can, whether the applicant can proceed with this lot line adjustment?
Or is it a subdivision?
Or...
I mean, are we ending with, are we starting with two lots and ending with two lots, or are we creating a separate lot? That's really the, it seems like you're, with the town, now the town road, you're creating a separate lot.
And that's where the attorney wasn't, he didn't want to give affirmative answer on...
But now he's got some...
Kind of was a specific case.
So we'll wait to hear.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Make a motion to continue.
What's that case number? 21, you got it?
I make a motion to adjourn case 21-010-LLA towards, is there a date? Next meeting?
Next meeting.
Which is?
22nd.
October 22nd. September 22nd, sorry.
At 7:00 PM.
September 23rd.
23rd?
No, well, nope.
No.
Someone has a 20/20 calendar in mind.
22nd at 7:00 PM.
22nd at 7:00 PM. Go back to the original one. There we go.
I'll second.
All right, those in favors indicate aye, raising hand.
Thank you.
And Peter, if we find out earlier, we'll just send you an email or something that says, hey, listen, this is what he said. If it's a negative.
A good night.
Thanks. Oh my God, it's not even eight. Thought we had these cleared up. Um, no, not until it's time for public input. What's this coming up next?
Is that what's next?
It's true, not until it's on the agenda.
This is the prior case.
This is the, okay, so now we're moving into the next part of our agenda, which is public comment.
We can't respond to any comments specific to a case.
Yeah, we cannot respond to any comments specific to any cases.
This is nothing to do with specifics. You guys are very knowledgeable and you've been dealing with this a long time. Say, what's your name, sir?
Paul Provo, 24 Lamprey. So my question was, at the start of the meeting, you gave a little, a comment about Article 19, and you used the word plated.
Used the word what?
Plated.
Plated?
Plated, yeah.
So I don't know what that means, so I'm just looking for clarification in layman's terms.
Platted would be a recorded piece of property, so recorded in a deed, the...
Or a subplan that shows you, hey, lot, lot, road.
Called a plat.
Okay, so Lamprey Drive was platted?
Nope, no, parcels along Lamprey Drive are platted.
Okay.
The, this specific one had a easement.
Yep.
Recorded easement through it, which is, could have a term plat as well.
Yeah.
It's synonymous with property.
Okay, so is platted what's on the deed and on paper, but travel could be something different, or?
Yes, traveled way can be where you're driving.
Yep.
And, and platted is just a legal numerical place on a plan.
Recorded usually.
Yes.
And the reason they had to reference both the traveled and the platted ways because it's pretty widely accepted, there's certain areas where the road veered off that platted way due to topography, so...
Correct.
And that's why there was that distinction over both, in both scenarios, the town essentially has, that is what the town road is.
Traveled road.
Right.
So the travel road...
Traveled and pla, and rights to the plat.
And, and the plat.
Okay, so, so if the travel road infringes on private property because it wasn't quite put in correctly, if the town were to maintain or make adjustments to that road, how would they do it? Would they do it from where it should have been out, or would they take it from where it currently is?
Currently, the town has right to the traveled way, to improve the traveled way and the platted way. So if it goes outside that platted way, that legal location that's shown on a plat or plan, they have, the town has rights to do that, and the town has rights to that driven way if it's just a pathway.
So it's conceivable that even though it's supposed to be 33 feet wide, say, but because the platted road infringes on public, private property, it actually could be wider.
Yep.
It could be a zig, zigzags.
It's, it's all private road, I mean, it's all private land.
Correct.
That underlies this.
Correct.
It's the right the town has to cross it, the right the town has to maintain it, the right the town has to improve it.
Right, okay.
I think to your point is, you're wondering, like, if they're going to widen that dirt, the physical traveled way, if they have to go to one, say the platted ways on one side of the road, if they can only go to that side, or you're just, you're just wondering if they expand the road in any way, if there's limitations.
If they expand the road, do they start with the platted road on one side and then move?
Chances are that we're going to go with the side where there's no construction on it.
It's going to be a combination, most likely, the traveled way.
We're not going to dig up your front yard if you have a nice lawn sitting there to get 5X feet.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that, John.
Okay, but again, there'll be a discretion made by the...
Right, each one of these are very specific, and, and if the town needs to, and, you know, if there's some drainage issues with that roadway, you know?
Well, again, it's going to vary, okay?
Yeah, I would say it varies on all of them.
I think it's also important to note that I think the town administrator is working to see what he can do to collect as much information as he can for the highway department as they look to improve the roads, and they're not going to just show up with a tractor one day and start doing ditch work, so I think he's, he's trying to create a process himself so that the highway department, when they do ditch work, stuff like that, that they, hopefully, they go out ahead of time and have some information so they can see, are we in the platted way? If we're not, but if it's the traveled way, doesn't make sense to move the road, can we make our improvements and not infringe on somebody's property further? Essentially what town administrator is trying to do right now.
Thank you. My second question was, you talked about improvements to the road and might be cost shared between the town and abudders, say? Would that, would the abudders know in advance if that's the case, and would they have any say in it if they wanted to contribute or not?
And would they have any say in it if they wanted to contribute or not contribute or?
I... You'll have say in it. I don't know whether it will be yes or no or how that's going to happen.
No, the say was when they voted to approve it as town roads. That was the say.
Well, that was the say. And whether they individual... I don't know whether the individual property owners have to pay for it.
I think typically it's going to come with property improvements.
If somebody wanted to go down this road, they've wrote in halfway down that road, they want to put in a ten-house subdivision. They... We, at the town, might say, listen, the road has to be now 25 feet wide. We, the town, will help you, the con... The builder, to a certain point or percentage of money to upgrade that road from that point to your new subdivision.
That's the intent.
And that was the intent of where we're going to... How we're going to widen there. If you're not in that distance or that path...
So you have a dirt road and maybe it doesn't conform...
Again, these are all going to be situations that are going to come up that are going to be case oriented.
Correct.
No definite answer you're going to get saying that.
That's fine. That's fine. I'm just trying to get a little background, a little better understanding. Say if a dirt road, maybe it's not 33 feet and the town wants to open it up to 33 feet. Is the town bearing the cost of that or is the town going to ask abudders to bear the cost of that? Part of it.
We can't answer that.
No, as I say, as long...
Only if you have an applicant who's seeking to increase the development on that specific road.
If you're not doing anything to your property and in that case, you're right. I mean, the town can't ask you to pay for it.
Well, most likely in those scenarios, well, as it happens every year, the town, the select board or the highway department would come forward with a warrant article where the town pushes that cost. They can't push that. If the town makes the decision, they can't.
It'll be a taxpayer cost.
Yeah, it's...
I understand that. I know if there was something specific to a certain section of a road that the town wanted to do and they're saying, well...
No, it's all in information gathering of what these roads are and how they're used and how many houses are on these roads and, you know, what documents we do have and...
And this applies to all of Nottingham's roads. So there could be a subdivision someplace else. And there could be a need to improve the road and that whoever's doing that subdivision could be asked to do improvements. So that's... It's not just the Article 19 roads we're talking about.
Well, it goes back to the language of Article 19 twos. The verbiage was "as is", which essentially means, you know, if it's unlike in previous years where there was, say, a condition to bring it up to a certain standard, that's basically saying the town's not going to bear the cost to bring that road up to standard. It's got to be a cost sharing in some other way from a private side. But the "as is" language essentially just the town took that and now that's the town's.
Right, that the town wanted to bring it up to a certain condition.
That's all... That's entirely... Yeah. There's nothing in the language to do that, yeah.
Good thing we're a really conservative town. We're not looking to blow a lot of money on things that aren't necessary. That's all. I'm just throwing that out there.
All right.
Well, it also, I do want to point you that this board does have some role in that is that if there are road widensings in areas that are being redeveloped, you know, that's part of the planning board's responsibility is that is it necessary in that area? Is that where the townspeople want to have more housing or less density or more density? So those are things that drive whether a road gets improved or doesn't get improved as well.
Okay.
We look at all of those things too.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your question.
Any other, uh, public comment we can help with?
I'm Herb Bernard. I'm at 22 Lamprey Drive. Herb Bernard. I guess my... Listening to what we just discussed, okay? Behind the two houses, mine and Paul's, we're pretty close to... I know mine's 33 feet because I made it that. But, you know, his is probably very close to that. But leading into it is just a little over a car width, right? Or a truck width because we've had box trucks in there. Is there something we need to do? You know, do we cut these trees down to enhance the town to, you know, get in there and, you know, widen this road for that little section? I'd just like to, you know, get a little clarification.
That would have to be brought up with the board of selectmen. Or the, um, public works director.
Yeah, I was going to say start with Sean.
I think the board of selectmen first. It's a question for the board of selectmen.
Right.
Because it involves work now on a town road.
Well, I mean, for a private individual to...
So that's an issue too, is the Lamprey Drive is now a town road.
Okay.
So you to go out and cut trees is problematic. But that would be an issue that would be brought to the board of selectmen.
No, because I mean, we're willing to do whatever we can to, you know, facilitate the emergency vehicles or whatever, you know, down the road. But, you know, if we had some guidance as to what we need to do, if anything, or the town needs to do, hey, we're perfectly willing to step up to the plate and do whatever we have to do, so...
I think that's good to hear and I'm sure John looks forward to having that conversation.
No, you know what? Those people are there. What he comments right now? There are very many, many people on these new assigned town roads that have the same feeling.
Oh, I imagine.
So this is not something new. So it is something that will be discussed because, yeah, there is a liability reason for having people go out and cut trees down and do whatever they want. And that's where we will have a discussion with the, um, the highway department.
Sean.
Sean, about like what?
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that there's people that want...
Well, I'm making a suggestion just to facilitate something happening rather than 10 years down the road, we, okay, look at this.
And so would you suggest people like Herb actually get on the agenda and talk with the selectmen?
Sure. Again, that's again another thing that's probably going to have to be discussed, obviously.
To get on the agenda and talk with the selectmen and bring that same question to the selectmen.
Add that to the budget list a little bit more next year, but...
You know, just, I mean, willing to help the town, but...
Yeah, it's just the board of selectmen makes the call or works with the highway department. We don't direct the highway department who now essentially has a...
Remember, the road is taken as is the way it was. So if it was 22 feet there and it's not 33 feet, again, can we make it to 30 feet? Is it... I mean, do we need to get permission from Mr. Bassett in order to widen that section? Because, you know, is that his land? I mean, there's variables that are in that whole thing that have to be looked at.
But technically, you said that the road is supposed to be 33 feet.
Well, according to the original plan, I guess. But we'd have to look at that in more detail.
Okay.
No, I'm saying it's not going to happen or it can't be happened. But again, I just can't say yes or no without...
We're trying to work out the process that that has to take.
Right.
Like that request has to probably work through the channels of finding its way to the highway department, but it has to be funneled through the board of selectmen.
No, but I'm sure there's other roads in town that, you know, that people would say, hey, I mean, to facilitate getting an ambulance or something down that road, I mean, it could be a little bit wider. Let's do it. And we're...
I'm in total support of it, just unfortunately because of the...
I just can't say yes or no to you. And I'd love to give you a yes or no answer right now, but I can't do that without talking to the other board members or saying like this. So I don't want to give you any false information by saying anything.
Okay.
But if you want to come in front of the board and present that, please do. We have open meetings every other Monday.
And we do have a capital improvement plan where all this kind of stuff goes on.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
We have a capital improvement plan where road repairs and a plan for what roads will be worked on over a course of six years. So that is a tool that the town uses to plan in the future.
Okay, is that available to the public or?
Uh, it's in your town report. You'll find it in the town report if you got the town report.
It's called the CIP.
The capital improvement plan.
Capital improvement.
It might be on the website. I'm not sure.
Could be.
Just trying to clarify it. Thank you.
No, thank you. Do we currently have a CIP?
Uh, it's not in session right now.
On session. That was Joe, right?
Any other public comment? Oh, thank you.
I can have a quick public comment that goes to a... My name is Pat Barrington and I'm 14 Lamprey Drive. And when Mike Timmeltie, he developed a piece of property, he was told that the road needed to be widened before he would be able to get a building credit. And that he went ahead and with the town's permission, he did widen the road with the property that I own and that people next door to me own and people across from me own. So they did do it in that case, but we're talking... That was probably Mike. I talked with Mike today. He happens to live in Florida. Asked him to get out documents so that I can see what he has. But, um, yeah, I know that that happened because I've owned since 88 on Lamprey Drive. 14.
Yeah, just...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ed's going to be so bummed.
Tell him to watch the YouTube.
Okay, well then.
Next on the agenda.
Next on the agenda. Uh... Updates. Buzz?
Nope.
Gary?
I'm enthusiastic.
Excellent.
Well, SRPC is going to have a 3:45 in the afternoon meeting. And I think that's doable for me, so...
On Friday?
Uh, it's...
Nice. Not on Friday.
Oh, take Friday off.
It's our quarterly.
So anyway, I'm enthusiastic and I know there's stuff about transportation that... I always enjoy that, so I'll try to find out maybe something about the construction on the bridge on 152 because I haven't heard anything where that's at.
Oh, yeah. Never mind, it's nothing. Board of Selectmen, we... Our last meeting, we rescinded the road standards as towards what the town voted for us to do on Article 20. Um, but there's discussion about redoing the road standards and bringing them back, but there'll be some changes and differences to that. Uh, and then we actually had a nice meeting with the, um, school board reps who are, um, trying to find a new home for the superintendent. Uh, we talked about using here and this discussion about using the old town hall. No definitive things. We still have another six or eight months. So we're actually looking at contractors now to see what it costs to upgrade that building enough to be able to hold the SAU. Uh, they will be paying for some of this. Of course, it's all tax money the way you look at it, but, um, to put them over there and not put them in here because if we stick them in here, we will basically make this building absolutely full to capacity where there is no room for nothing else. And that is, you know, something to consider for down the road. If you get them planted here, then if the town needs to grow or any more space, we don't have anything. So that's a discussion of what needs to be done so we can properly...
Didn't we upgrade the town hall a few years ago for the daycare folks that were using it?
Uh, we upgraded the electrical, but we didn't make any... And that was just so they could use the internal, um, big front room. Nothing was done to the back. We had plumbing issues this year because the door wasn't closed, pipes froze. That wasn't good. Uh, the back offices...
They said there was like wood issues in a couple areas.
The septic line is probably all grown in because the bathrooms don't flush right. So electrical, we're up to code.
That whole septic system is built on a ledge, isn't it?
Uh, it's...
Or what?
Yeah, depending what it looks like, so...
It's all ledge.
Probably should have never been.
Those guys 100 years ago, but that's, uh... You know, that's something where, I mean, we're looking at it, not set in stone. I mean, they had another building that they were hoping to get at, but at least out to somebody else before they could get it done. So that was unfortunate. And we're just kind of trying to find a place for them. So it's an ongoing discussion. Since there was no addition to the school, there was no addition for them either there, so... Can I just go back to the road standards? Could you, uh, let them know that the planning board would like to be party to those discussions of road standards? Or was it... Who's going to design... Who's going to make the road standards, I guess?
Well, the last set of road standards was all by the board of selectmen and with consultation of Sean, the highway department.
The planning board would like to have input to the road designs.
I caught what you said.
Yeah. Thank you.
Before I voted on final copy, we'd be happy to probably send you one to the road.
It would be nice if we were in the planning stage of those because there are roads that we, the planning board, have to adopt and make into roads here for the town community to drive on.
So we'll make a joint meeting.
So I think it would be right important to have the planning board involved with the road standards.
I like that term right there, the joint meeting. Because I was also... Dirk beat me to it. I wanted to bring up because I also think...
Well, we were not included for the previous road.
Hey, I didn't even want them, so it wasn't...
You are the representative.
I know.
I'm not telling you. I'm telling you. You as the representative.
Yeah.
The planning board was not consulted on the road standards.
You weren't.
Right. Which is wrong.
I say it wasn't, sorry.
So with that, the joint... I think the joint... I think a joint meeting to kick off anything is a good idea, but I also believe the road standards has a place in the zoning ordinance or, uh, sorry, the zoning subdivision or site plan adjacent to the new road standards because living as its own ordinance, just as a town ordinance... Otherwise, if we have applications come before us for a subdivision, we can't... We can't hold them to any sort of ordinance in the subdivision. We have to find a way to hold them to a... Because currently they were adopted essentially as a town ordinance. They lived on the board of selectmen page. They were never incorporated in a subdivision ordinance, zoning ordinance. Really, if we have a subdivision application become before us, the road standards for new roads lives in the subdivision and that's where we request waivers to such is that it really should...
Because they're doing a subdivision.
Right, but the whole idea is that if a subdivision comes forward, uh, there's plenty of land and I know there's rumors out that there are some large subdivisions coming forward. They can sub... They can propose, say, a 10-lot subdivision. And currently, the only road standard that we can even review, SRPC can review against, is the new road standard, which we know based on some cultivation. We can't always just say, oh, go pave a 20-foot roadway. Is that if there is going to be this road standard for essentially something based off of what the board of selectmen originally passed, that should live in the subdivision ordinance because it will apply to future subdivisions.
See, so the design... The purpose for the road standards that were enacted by the board of selectmen without the consultation of the planning board, sorry, was due to current roads and bringing the current roads that are town-owned up to a certain level. Always under the mind that if somebody comes in and says, I'm coming off my current road, whatever name of road, that's already a town road standardized or whatever, they're always going to have to meet the planning board's subdivision regulations. 24-feet ride, two-foot kicks off the side, you know, drainage, da-da-da-da, the whole thing. So these standards were only meant to actually bring up substandard already town roads to a certain level.
Right, I understand.
That was the whole interpretation of why they wanted them. So if you took off, um, I can't remember the name of the road, but if you're going, let's use Ledge Farm, and you take off Ledge Farm Road and it brings you up to the backside of Francisco Way. Why can't I remember that road?
Port Farm.
There you go. That road in spots is substandard towards any, you know, regulation. I mean, it's narrow, it goes up, the turns are 90 degrees, it's steep. It's... It didn't meet the standards that were the one. Again, that was a goal for the building or highway department, say, hey, listen, these were these standards. Can we slowly bring these substandard roads up to the level? That was the purpose for the standards.
Oh, I totally... I think that's good, but I also think that's something we're going to look to as subdivision regulations. If we have a subdivision application that... going to look to as subdivision regulations, if we have a subdivision application that-
Well, why would a subdivision, again, I'm not trying to be argumentative here, but I'm trying to follow why would a subdivision?
So, so you use Port Farm, Francisco Way, right?
Right.
So, Port Farm, so that Dunbarton-
Yep.
-way back when-
Mm-hmm.
-was built, um, and there was, the road goes, I forget exactly which one it is, but goes right off and, and feeds into Port Farm Road.
Absolutely.
If we had, if we had road standards for, for Port Farm Road because of, so it's a gravel road, so you, they're-
Sure.
In Bedford, they call them rural roads.
Yep.
So, let's just use that, all right? So, we as a board could have, if we went to the developer and said, okay, you build this, but we want you to take from that road, that where that dumps off into Port Farm, to this, to the state road, and we want you to upgrade that to-
Whatever.
To a brand new, you know, road development standard, they may, they probably would have said, timeout, no way. It, it doesn't meet, you know, it doesn't meet standards at all.
All right.
But if we said, all right, well, we want you to, we want you to upgrade that road to these rural road standards, these, these, you know, lesser road standards-
Gravel cross-section, whatever we decide, yeah.
...because there's more traffic, then maybe they would have said, okay, I agree with that.
Sure. But we don't have anything on our regulations. Not to say that, I think it's great that the town, you know, Sean wants to use that when he goes to do reconstruction projects, but from an approval perspective from the town, it'd be great if, you know, once those are finalized, that we can find a way to, obviously, we have to pass them through a warrant article and such, but it really should, I think it's something we should work towards getting adopted to in the zone, in the subdivision ordinance, um, or subdivision regulations. Not to say that, obviously, the Board of Selectmen can-
Well, as the town attorney-
I'm up with their vibe, there's nothing-
The town attorney pointed out that we didn't need to.
Need to-
When we set those original roads, uh-
To put them in the subdivision?
We didn't have to get a warrant article, we could just add them in.
To you, the Board of Selectmen, could just tuck them in the subdivision? Or just, just create the ordinance itself?
Just create an ordinance itself.
So, maybe that's something that, you know, bringing up that angle is-
Oh, yeah, again, there's-
I just look at it from our-
These are all more discussions that are going to-
I think his, I think his discussion points to Dirk's-
Yeah, absolutely.
The reasoning and-
Sure.
And, and the reason why the planning board should be-
And obviously, there's certain parties that will feel that, like, we really should get something back on the books, and then that seems to be the way that, you know, the Board of Selectmen can revise it. I mean, they were even told they could, they could have voted that night to reinstate the same thing, basically, but-
Yep.
Um, it would be great if maybe we, yeah, we conclude that, is there a way? Because I do believe it belongs, otherwise, how do we review subdivision applications and-
Yeah.
Hold up something to them, but-
Yeah, the point is, it should just be coordinated. I mean, we shouldn't have two different standards.
Yeah.
It can be varying standards of different degrees of roadways, but-
Local arterial-
Yeah, so we actually talked about that, making different, like, again, like what you said the other day, with the Bedford having different class roads that meet different types of standardized, or whatever you want to say on there, because some roads will never possibly ever make a new subdivision.
Nor do they need it.
Yeah.
Nor, absolutely.
You know, there's not, every road needs 30 feet of pavement width.
Again.
You know?
Well, what's the state have? Six classifications of road ways?
Yeah.
So, probably more?
I mean, it's common to have about, it's common to have about three, if you're going to start doing road classifications, so.
Like, two for our community is good.
Yeah, I think we only have about two types of roads anyway, so we don't care about the state roads.
Rural and-
Less rural.
Rural number one, or rural number two.
But I do think if, if those do come back on the agenda, it would be good to have a joint meeting in some form, or even us, us-
I will send a message to everybody on the board right now about this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Uh, I had-
No, not yet.
The last thing I wanted to mention, I think I saw on the recording that Dirk brought it up, but I did, I did do some research on some of the building height stuff. I do have handouts, but I'll wait until we kind of talk about multiple things. And I know we want to get some more feedback from Fire Department, see if we can get them in the same room, so.
Yeah.
I do, I'm still looking to a couple different-
And that's fine, I think-
Just examples, really, it's just some things to look at.
Yeah, I, I think we made our list. In fact, we're going to pull that list together. Was James here?
I was saying, I was going to.
Yeah, so James was here. We're going to pull kind of this consolidated list of all of the lists.
Master list.
A master list.
I will call up with James on that.
Knowing that we're probably going to be, uh, in the heat of SB 2 deadlines, right?
Um, but anyway, we're talking about this, Amy, you still need to have a plan for a board hearing in December, second hearing in June.
I think last, last, last year, we said-
End of November.
Yeah, by November, we kind of solidified everything.
Yeah, have everything done, posted before next year.
Do you have anything, Charlie?
No, I don't.
Do you, Jen?
Very, very quickly.
Yeah.
Um, Blair Haney, uh, new regional planner, starts on Monday. Uh, first thing I would be handing him is the notes that I've furiously printed. I have 38 pages of notes of, like, since James and I kind of took it over one step, just kind of keeping everything as a running log for him, um, making sure everything's tied out nicely for him. Uh, Blair has about 20 years of planning and zoning experience, primarily working at the municipal level, uh, has worked in Massachusetts, so-
Was that the guy that was here last time?
No, that was James.
Okay, sorry.
James Berdine, he's a regional planner also at SRPC, he typically covers Northwood.
Got you.
Um, so, uh, so, yep, so Blair is starting next week. Uh, he will be at your meeting on the 22nd. Kevin Liu is also here, your new land use clerk, and so I'll be coordinating behind the scenes hopefully next week, and sit down with the three of us and coordinate, and Juan and us are welcome, too. Um, I think they'll play it on the 22nd to have a conversation about kind of staffing plans, but your agenda's starting to look pretty full.
Yeah. Well, let me, let me just throw it out now, is that, you know, we've got kind of new representation as, and from the SRPC, we've got new representation, um, assisting us for land use. Think about it, you don't have to say anything tonight, but is there some things you would like to be done differently, or changed, or, um, I mean, we've got some flexibility on things. Do you want it all electronic? Do you like having paper? Do you like, you know, anything that's even remotely? So, just think about it, if, if there's some procedures that you think can help the board, then bring them up.
I was going to throw out there one thing I actually like, I don't know who did this, but it seemed like the website changed, where it actually says current applications before the board? I had to hunt through agendas to figure out. I'll send Chris an email, that was, I liked that, being able to click on that.